All right, good evening. This is awesome. We're very excited to have all of you guys here and to celebrate all of the promotions and the hard work that you guys do. But before we do that, please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you to the families, family and friends for joining us this evening. It's our distinct pleasure to introduce our new police chief, Mike Casey, and he's going to kick it off and then we'll get into it.
All right. I don't want to give one of these, but it's okay. I do need these. All right, firstly, what we're going to do, we're going to kind of break this up a little bit. I'm going to reiterate Satan and then I'm going to pass it back to the banner chair and we're going to conduct some monster, some awards and then we'll proceed that way. But I do want to open up the Satan and shout out to all of you, I actually wrote some things now because when I go off the cuff, I kind of refer to things. Good evening. It is my great honor to stand with you as the police chief. I celebrate some very special announcements and well-deserved promotions. Not only is this a special night for the Hanson Police, but the community as a whole, when we continue to grow and support one another for such important occasions. First, I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to the board of selectmen, the banner chair, along with the town administration. Your unwavering support and guidance has been instrumental in allowing the Hanson Police to hold this meeting for so long. So thank you very much. We are truly grateful for your dedication to our community and for fostering the environment where public safety and community engagement is a priority. Your leadership not only helps us serve the town more carefully, but also strengthens the bond between the police department and the citizens we proudly serve. So thank you once again for your trust and partnership. It is with your support that we can continue to build a safer and stronger Hanson together, along with building the culture that is so important to me and all of our offices at the Hanson Police. I would say as I always do, you must have the right culture and I believe that we as a department strive for that, along with the help of the community and our supporting base. So I just want to thank you for moving this, allowing me, the families, my officers, to have this opportunity to show off in front of the community there and their families and I greatly appreciate you making the effort.
Well, thanks and it's because of you the issue of the police promotions happening and we're happy that you did take the words that we said to you when we promoted you, which is make it your own. So it's very exciting and you're only a couple of months in here.
In 30 years.
Yeah. None of that counts. It's what happens after being.
We're all for peace.
Yeah. So we've got a couple of recognitions and call them above and beyond, but truthfully, all of you deserve these, you know, these commendations, but we can't give people commendations for all the many, many things you do. And as I jokingly said to Chief O'Brien, we can't give commendations every time we get tagged up from a tree, but we would if we could and we can't. And it would also really kind of water down the course of some of these awards. So this is the above and beyond award for police officer Benjamin Ford. In official recognition of your courageous actions during the emergency situation on September 2nd, 2025, at great personal risk, he came to the aid of fellow community with dedication and diligence. On this day, he rendered life-saving CPR to a victim in medical crisis and your heroic actions will always be remembered. On behalf of the citizens of Hanson, the select board extends its sincerest thank you and expresses its deepest gratitude and appreciation. And secondly, we have Kyle Promby, who also was part of the September 2nd, 2025 life-saving efforts and I'm spared you may not read it again, but I think they can understand that he was a critical part of this as well. And last but not least, we have Derek Carrington, police officer Derek Carrington, AKA Steve's dad. And again, he was part of these heroic efforts. So we really sincerely thank you guys for going above and beyond every day, but in particular for you three on this particular day in saving a struggling life. So thank you.
I want to echo those sentiments. We have an amazing relationship with the fire department. Obviously, I want to thank Chief probably O'Brien for being here today and giving us the support against the other fire departments in the room. I think it's just amazing. I think Sergeant Daly, senior, can explain back in the day, fire police didn't get along so well. There was a little path failure, a little corys kind of thing going on in this town and that, that is gone. We have an amazing relationship. A lot of the guys that grew up with the men in both departments and they work really well together. And one of these situations sometimes calling when our fire department is out and out, every aspect, all their units are out and we're called or something here. Like, I really wanted to describe what these three officers did right away before you in. Again, I wrote it down. On Tuesday afternoon, December 2nd, 2025, Hanson Police and Fire Smaller Report of Unresponsive Male Party in Paveback Rescue Emergency on Whitman Street. Officer Ben Ford arrived within minutes from the call, followed by Officer Kyle Promby. Both officers entered the residence, began to move the man patient to the kitchen floor where they initiated two bursts of CPR. Officer Ford began performing chest compressions while Officer Promby provided breath via the end of bed. Officer Derek Carrington arrived moments after, cleared the scene from responding neutral aid, prepped the defibrillator and assisted both officers in CPR convulsions. The officers continued CPR for seven to eight minutes while waiting upon Whitman Fire Department arrival assuming control of the scene. It has to be stated, their exemplary performance highlights the importance of well-trained first responders in an emergency medical situation. The officer's ability to quickly assess the scene, initiate life-saving measures and work cohesively under pressure demonstrate the critical role of the law enforcement players in the public health and safety team. This incident also underscores the value of ongoing training, preparedness and effective coordination between the police and the fire department. Their recognition by the town of Hanson and its leadership and service, not only they honor these officers, but also reinforces the community's commitment to supporting and equipping its emergency personnel. Their dedication and professionalism are vital in ensuring that the best possible outcomes for the residents of great places. So Officer Ben Ford, Officer Kyle Promby and Officer Derek Carrington, please. These three and the rest is on that out here every day you will not all catch. People run away, along with fire, we run to it and just leave sometimes the deployed recognize when you go above and beyond. There is somebody today living, only reason is because of these three general defense. So again, thank you so much. Great job. It wasn't air routes, circulation, it was ambulance before cruisers. So these guys, these guys are doing a great job responding quickly and doing a fast recovery. So we had some exciting, new things happen in the Hanson Police. And again, if I could say in my own words, what is exciting about this is your cooperation, allowing me to change something that's been going on for the structure of this police department. We have so many amazing men and women that are talented in this department and I've always just felt we need to maximize the growth. We need to change the way things are and forever and ever I will be here, I promise you that I will just be the best in this police department and no one else, not me, the town and these men and women. And it's extremely important, even Chief Mix, we'll like to do something good for Chief Mix. But it is important for me to have your support and you giving me that opportunity to do this, I just can't thank you enough. I'm quite certain these two things that I can thank enough for you. Well, let's get it started. Do some previous retirements, one being Chief Mix, who just walked into the lead as always. We were, we're able to fill one of the two retirement diaries and under the circumstances, we sometimes spend a little for lateral transfers. Like we've been very, very successful filling in some positions and boys and getting some really, really talented transfers. I think other than Derek, Officer Ben Ford was a transfer from Oplus and Officer Kyle Promby was a transfer from the Troy. And it's just been, it's another, another aspect of why all these gentlemen want to come here and they do an amazing job. So there is talent out there. And we have been fortunate to take a lateral from both PD. And I would like to ask if Luke Whalen would come on, please? And along with his dad, Peter and Ray, Anna. So Luke is a three-year police officer. He has just transferred, sounding effective September 15th from police department. Luke is a newly resident of Hanson. He bought a new home in Hanson. He just moved in after doing some renovations. Going through his background, going through the interview, all of her is Luke is great guy, great kid, strong worker, out there, wants to do a great job. And I'm quite certain and confident, Luke, that you're going to fit in perfectly here at Hanson PD. And we're excited to have you. I'm excited that you chose Hanson and welcome to the family. Jessica.
Do you, Luke Whalen, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a police officer of the Hanson Police Department to the best of your ability in accordance with the bylaws of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth?
I do, yes. Thank you. Being pinned by his girlfriend, Ray, and this is dad of Peter. He's going to be pinned by his wife, too. Bob is another example of a lateral transfer, just the success of fitting in, being coming back home and just making the best of every opportunity he has. Bob's transferred here from Oplus PD 55 and a half years ago. He took the sides of them last year where we had an extreme sexual shoveling, sitting on officers' paths, all really within each other. So we've been able to pull out, that list active and Bobby's was next on the list here. And September 15th of this year, he was placed on Midnight, straight Midnight as the supervisor. So I'm quite certain he's happy and Julius is not. If you want to.
Do you, Robert Mansfield, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a sergeant of the Hanson Police Department to the best of your ability in accordance with the bylaws of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth?
I do. I'm excited. I'm excited for something that again has been needed and the opportunity for people to set up and we department leaders, as they've always demonstrated, as many of our citizens are. But this is just such an important part of the growth of Hanson. Five me on, but I'm retired, the next one up, the next one up and these are future leaders. So it's, it's a great time for their families, a great time for them and I'm just excited to help them grow and become the leaders that I know they will be and keep this place in-house and go forward with the success plan is in place. Excited with Lieutenant Peter Daley. He's accompanied by his wife, Tara, and his children and retired Hanson police sergeant over 30 years, Pete Daley, see him? Who have been doing him. So everybody knows Daley. He resigned in 2001. He's been assigned for 11 years. He, he's a leader. He has the presence, he has the command, he has the respect. As I have for him and as the remaining department, they look up to him and he's earned that spot. He's all about the time in Hanson, he's all about HPD and I'm just excited for this opportunity for him, excited to watch him grow and Pete is being promoted to the lieutenant of operations effective September 15th, 2025. And as I said earlier, he'd be pinned by Sergeant Peter Daley, see him?
Do you, Peter Daley, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a lieutenant of the Hanson Police Department to the best of your ability in accordance with the bylaws of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth?
You will. Lieutenant Alicia Durden. So we all know Alicia. She's an 18-year veteran who joined the Hanson Police in 2013. Again, another successful lateral transfer to PD. She has served as a sergeant for the last past five and a half years. She's another leader, very, very smart. She has the respect of all the men and women in the police department. She's proven herself over and over again and when it came time to take the assessment, I'm quite certain that she probably figured, yeah, just going to go for this and we'll see what happens as well. Well, she killed it and I couldn't be more proud and we set, we set this for people to put themselves in the right path and Alicia really has done that. So it's my honor to congratulate you lieutenant and I look forward to seeing you as the newly sworn lieutenant of administration expected September 15th, 2025. Congratulations.
Do you, Alicia Durden, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as lieutenant of the Hanson Police Department to the best of your ability and in accordance with the bylaws of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth?
I do.
Okay, I'm not going to take up any more time. I just want to thank you on behalf of everybody, men and women again, for supporting us. This is a very special occasion and just want to say what they do every day, sometimes as an OC, they're out there and I can't be more proud of them and I appreciate them welcoming us in chief and giving me that support also along with the boy. So thank you so much for giving us this time.
Well, thank you all for joining us and we would like you to join this part of our meeting to get down to the real business that we've got to do back in town. So I would advocate worship to adjourn.
Thank you.
And thank you so much and congratulations, everybody.
All right, and we are back from a wonderful swearing-in ceremony in celebration of some of the achievements of our Hanson Police Department. And so we have already done the pledge of allegiance, but shall we do it again? Why not? Why not? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always find it to be a little centering to say the pledge of allegiance at the beginning, remind you, you know, why you're doing this. So with that, Mr. Hill, can we forge ahead into the public announcements and upcoming meetings?
Sure. We're looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees. The bylaw committee has three openings available. The cable and internet committee has two openings available. The capital improvement committee has one opening available. The energy committee, I believe, has three openings available. The historical commission has two openings available and the memorial day and patriotic observance committee has three openings available. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-mass.gov, or by calling the select board's office at 781-293-2131. Retriever slash waterfowl training at the senior center on Wednesday, September 24th at 10:00 a.m. All are welcome to watch or participate. Annual Hanson Day, rain or shine, Indian Head School on September 27th, 11 to 2 p.m. The rain venue will be the Hanson Middle School. It'll be, it is co-hosted by the economic committee and the business network. Free to participate if you're a resident or you serve Hanson residents, encouraging civic, church, nonprofits, small businesses to join. The MBTA informational forums will be held at the Hanson Middle School, 111 Liberty Street on September 29th and October 2nd from 6:00 to 7:30, which is hosted by the select board. And there is a special town meeting at the Hanson Middle School, 111 Liberty Street on Monday, October 6th at 6:30.
And did we have one? Oh, yeah, I was going to say, oh, yeah, there's more. I knew we, yeah, because it's a three.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. And there's a trunk or treat at the Indian Head School on Sunday, October 18th, from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 p.m. with a rain date of Saturday, 10/25. A reminder to Hanson residents to license your dog by September 30th to avoid a $25 late fee. You can register online or by mail. Any questions, please contact the town clerk's office. And the upcoming select boards meetings are September 30th, 2025, October 14th, 2025. And again, there's a special town meeting, October 6th, 2025. Is there more?
Oh, okay. No, there isn't more, but I just want to make sure that we do post the October 6th meeting as a selectman's meeting too, because we do typically meet prior to the meeting just to tidy up anything that might be.
Jessica already gave me the heads up.
Okay, okay. All right, great.
Two different times.
Great.
Chair.
Yes.
If you want to announce that the meeting is being recorded.
Thank you very much. And I was remiss to not mention that this meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television for those viewing in your pajamas at home at your leisure. Okay, so that brings us to our agenda. First up is new business, the 2026 private way plowing list. Ms. Green, this is always a much anticipated discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, vice chair and members of the board. So every year, the select board is presented with a private way plow list in, for approval. And what that does is it does allow the highway department to plow private roadways. And we have seen some cold weather and some snow in October, so we thought it well to present this earlier rather than later, Chair.
Okay, and I know you have had concerns in the past about the way your neck of the woods was construed.
Right. It's okay the way it is. I just never heard it called Pine Grove Colony. It's just the.
Sounds a little more shee shee, doesn't it?
Doesn't it?
That's what it is. I always knew what to say.
Okay. And my concern in the past was that Pine Grove Ave wasn't on it, but Pine Grove Ave is not a private way.
Okay. Ah, good point.
What is, can I ask a question? Where's Sydney Lane?
What is what?
Sydney is right, right past the corner of 27 and 58, heading towards like LZ Thomas. It's right on the right-hand side there, not too far from where the little liquor store, the Sandy's Coffee Corner is, like heading, heading towards LZ Thomas. And there's only three maybe houses on, it's off on the right-hand side.
Why have I, oh, okay. I know where it is.
Yeah. Okay.
And is there more than one lakeside? Like, isn't there a lakeside terrace?
Lakeside Drive, Lakeside Road.
Lakeside Terrace, right?
Terrace.
Is that a private road? I don't know.
Nope. Doesn't look like it.
It's not on here.
Okay, these are the, these are actually the roads that have been on the list for prior years.
Yeah.
Obviously, we removed Alden Way, Gray Lane, Stringer Lane that were adopted, accepted as public ways. So this list here is the most up-to-date list that we have with all the private ways.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve the private way pile list of 2026 as presented to us.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then that brings us application for appointment to Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance. We have fortunately got a gentleman who is a veteran and is interested in continuing to give back, because he already gives back in many ways, to the town and to his local area. And his name is David Bo.
Bovee.
Bovee.
Say it right.
Okay. All right. Bovee. And I will entertain a motion to, and I did have the pleasure of meeting him. He came and met with the veterans officer.
He's his brother.
And he's Ann's brother, but don't hold that against him, okay? So, so he's, he's also on the cable committee, so he, yeah, he already, you know, he's familiar with how boards and committees and all that work. So I will entertain a motion to appoint David Bovee. It is not a conflict of interest, but if you want to recuse yourself, you certainly can.
No, I'd love to.
There's no financial gain. There's no financial gain or anything of that sort.
I would love to make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I mean, you could put a disclosure in just in case anybody thinks that you otherwise wouldn't have appointed him, but.
I was surprised if anybody else would see him out there, which is great.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Then that brings us to Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest by Lan Woodard and Carol Srazero. So, so they both are filing indicating Lan is currently, as you recall, she just got appointed to the position of Assistant Collector to the Treasurer Collector. And then Carol is the Office Manager for the Hanson Water Department. And they are letting us know that although Lan works as the, in the Treasurer Collector's office, and Carol is an employee of the Water Department, that, that, you know, blah, 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 that they're saying that Lan's son, one of the municipalities, said that he will handle is the Town of Hanson, he's not an employee with the Town of Hanson, but works for a firm that does work with the municipality. It's an accounting firm. Employment of a family member with the accountants firm that works at municipal offices, one of which will include the Town of Hanson. So I think they're letting us know that their grandson slash son works for an accounting firm that may or may not have an involvement in the Town of Hanson. I think we would, what do we, what do we think about that? What would we, I think if possible, we would probably ask that that family member not be assigned to the Town of Hanson.
I guess, can we do that?
I don't know. I mean, they're making a disclosure, and I mean, if, it's two employees, you know, of the town. I'm wondering if we perhaps should circle back with Town Council and see if they have a recommendation. You know, I do, I want to be super clear, I'm grateful that these guys disclosed this. This is great, fresh air and sunshine, get it out there, let us know that you think there might be, you know, a conflict. But since it is somewhat of a new process for us, I find myself on unsure footing. So I think I'd like to circle back with Town Council and see if they have any concerns or if it's merely a case of us just voting to acknowledge that we've been given this disclosure. Okay, so can you guys follow up on that? And can we plan on putting that on our next agenda? Because I, you know, hopefully we're able to get a somewhat speedy response on that.
From my own, so the issue here is that these two individuals are in a relationship?
No, they're not in a relationship. They, I mean, they are, like Carol is Lan's mother-in-law, and they both work for the town, Carol in Water and Lan in Treasurer Collector. But Lan's son and Carol's grandson is, works for an accounting firm that does work for the Town of Hanson. So, and they're disclosing, and I just, I'm not sure, do we just accept it or not? So, and technically, I'm not even sure that Carol's disclosure is one that, it's supposed to be to your Appointing Board or Committee, and I think she probably needs to make that disclosure to the Water Commission, so that's another question I have. Okay, we had a discuss and vote to recertify October 4th, 2021, Special Town Meeting Vote of Article 19 Act in the Town of Hanson Local Licenses and Permit Denial, Revocation, or Suspension for Failure to Comply with Conditions of Approval. I ran into Rep. Squeezy at the 9/11 ceremony over at the Fire Department, and he mentioned that, just for a variety of reasons, none of which really matter, a, we had originally taken a vote at town meeting and at, as a Select Board to increase some various fees. And for whatever reason, that never got filed with the Legislature to make it to the next step. So he wanted to pick that ball up and go with it, and he suggested that the best way for us to effectuate that would be for us to take another vote at this meeting saying, yes, indeed, we do still, you know, we do still intend to have the will of the voters articulated by having him move forward with this legislation.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Great. And next up is discuss dissolving the Stormwater Management Committee. Mr. Hill, I think you're probably in the best position to give us the lowdown.
So two Fridays ago, the Stormwater and Drainage Commission Committee met, and after a very good meeting, we decided that other departments and committees within the Town of Hanson are fulfilling a lot of the roles that we thought the disposal and Drainage Committee was supposed to be fulfilling. And it has been suggested before, in front of Delisa and others, that we, the committee really didn't know what its purpose was, what its, what its agenda was, et cetera. So at the meeting, we decided that we will, we would, we would vote to dismantle that.
So, well, okay, so just to be clear, it's a committee that was created by the Select Board, so the Select Board needs to make the vote to dismantle it or not. You may all vote that you're never going to show up at another meeting again, or that you're not going to participate, but the Select Board would be the body that would, would make that decision. But what I'm hearing you guys say is that you're making a recommendation that your path is unclear, your mission is unclear, and that there are more effective ways of you guys spending your time? And that you feel that most of what you understood you were going to do is really in bits and pieces being done by others?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
But we, at this point in time, unfortunately, we have not got the minutes signed off on, so we cannot vote, I don't think, to dismantle. Maybe we can.
Well, no, because you're still going to need the committee that created the, that they've met, that created the minutes to approve the minutes. And if we disband the committee, then you won't have a committee to do that.
Correct.
So, so I would, I mean, why don't we just sort of take a vote conceptually?
Yes.
That at the point at which you have tidied up your loose ends, that what we would want to do. I certainly don't feel as though there's any need for us to have a committee that doesn't feel as though they're needed and that doesn't have a clear mission. And we've waffled a bit on this, and we've, you know, I think we've all, we've struggled with it, you guys had asked for direction, we tried to give you direction. And I think now with the MS4 and the Stormwater Management stuff, I know one of the, several of the articles that we've got on the upcoming town meeting warrant are related to zoning and bylaw changes that are necessitated by the Stormwater Management Regulations. So I think that's one piece of it. And then we've now got, you know, a functioning, you know, Highway Director who is very aware of what the regulations are. We've got a Conservation Commission who's very aware of what the regulations are. So I agree that although at one point in time it may have been necessary, it may not be necessary anymore. What do people think?
If we're going to dismantle it, I think we should do it on January 1st to give three months, so that way there's a cap, so that we can make sure that people meet in like a, in a closed type of timeline.
Will that work? I mean, so, I like it, so we just put a bow on it, we can just try to.
We will meet before that.
Yeah, yeah. That gives you a little wig.
Gives you three months.
All right, so are you making that motion?
Uh, yeah, however you want to order.
All right, all right, great. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, amazing. So amazing that I've lost my place. All right, Energy Committee resignation, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of John Murray.
So moved.
So moved with, I'll second it with regrets.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, great.
So that leaves us currently with two members of a five.
So who is still a member now?
Me and Marion.
Okay, so, okay, so you and Marion, so.
There is one gentleman who I think will be.
He applied.
He's, I'm getting it.
He'll be presented at the next meeting.
Okay.
He just didn't make the agenda.
All right, so, so.
Just getting that really quick. If it's not too much trouble, when you, when you put the openings on here, can you do like an out of, how many, so we actually know how many people are on there?
I do, yeah.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, if we could focus, and I know we've had this conversation before, but I, you know, we've never really kind of gotten any movement on it. I think it would be a good idea for us to do a better job of telling people what the committee is responsible, what each of these committees are responsible for. I think it feels to people as though this is a lifetime commitment, and they are going to just have to give up their day job and give away their children and, you know, like put their dog up for adoption because you're just not going to be able to do anything but these committees. But in fact, many of them are one meeting a month for a couple of hours.
So is that what you're saying, suggesting is not like a background of what they do, but.
No, a little blurb, no, both, both. A little blurb that says, you know, the Energy Committee, you know, we study ways that the town could save energy or whatever.
And you want, you want that on, on the.
No, 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 I'm not going to torture you by making you read off of them. No, no, no.
You see where I'm going.
No, I see where you're going. No, that is, that is not my intention, no. I was thinking we could do some Facebook posts and some stuff on our town website. And I, and I know there's a lot of things on our website that need to be fixed. One of them most certainly is the visibility and ease at which you can find the application to volunteer. It's very deep, and you have to know how to search in order to get it, which seems a little counterintuitive since every week, poor Ed is begging for people to join these committees, and we're not making it easy for them to do it. Plus, we're not even telling them what the committees are or what they do. People need a decoder ring to figure it out. So if we can kind of work on that collectively, that would be great. I, a couple of years ago, I started doing some Facebook posts about it, and I just did like brief little, but I mean, now with AI, I feel like you could go out and just be like, what does the, you know, Energy Committee do and get a sanity check on it so it's not something crazy from something, you know, that's not applicable? And then just do a brief little, you know, and then just reach out and say to Ed, like, Ed, like, on average, how many hours are Marion, like, how many hours do you think you, you would spend a month? So we're being honest, like, I don't want to sell people a bill of goods and say, oh, it's only two hours, and, you know, then it ends up being a lifetime commitment. But I, I think that that's, that's something that's missing. People just don't know, and they're afraid to dip their toes in the water because they don't know. So I think if we could work on that, it might go a long way to filling some of these vacancies. And then we, we had a lot of success, it was short-lived, but we did have a lot of success when we needed folks for like capital improvement. We did like a little cry for help, and people joined, and we've had similar success for the Camp Kawani Commission. We were like, help, you know, we need help, and people did sign up. So if we could target, you know, I think capital improvement is definitely an important committee for us to be recruiting for.
Lisa's just trying to talk.
And that one meets twice a year.
What are you saying?
When you're going to say, I was just going to say, on our Hanson website.
Yeah.
People, if people go on and if they look at the Easy Access tab, there is, there is a block on there that says Volunteer and Employment Opportunities. If they just click on that and go to the bottom, that's where the application for appointment is. And right on there, it has the volunteer opportunities for the committees, but we can update it again.
Does it say which committees are available? Is that updated?
It, it looks pretty updated, it's pretty close. But what we can do maybe is put links to somewhere else that talks about what the committee does, but.
Yeah.
It is there under actually Easy Access.
Okay, great. Ironically. Okay, that sounds great. Do anybody have anything else on that that they wanted to talk about?
Are we still working on John, or do we?
Keep me honest, ladies, did we have a?
You already voted.
Okay, great, thank you, because we have had times when we've been caught mid-vote and we don't, we don't wrap it up. All right, Discuss and Vote Cultural Council Appointment. So as you recall, I believe it was at our last meeting, we were caught a little bit unaware that there is a specific state law regarding cultural commission, and we had been just skipping merrily along and appointing people on, I think, an annual basis, but it turns out that is not in keeping with the regulations. Ms. Green?
Yes, so, under, under the statute, the cultural, the cultural council is a three-year appointment term. I don't know when something happened and it went to a one-year, but what we did was we went back through town reports, we had the Town Clerk's Office help us out. We went back to 2019 to try and see where the staggering should happen. And, I mean, going back to that, it's, how we came up with this is that we have one, two, three, four, we have four members who, you know, back in 2019, we went three years, three years, three years, but we have four members on a 2027 term expiration. We have two members on a 2029 term expiration. Even going back before that, still didn't really, doing it by three, we have the same four people that ended up on the same staggering. So I, I'm at a loss with the will of the Board or how they may want to stagger this more from, you know, going back almost six to seven years. And it just seems like this here, counting three, 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 is how it worked out with the terms. The statute doesn't really specify how many have to be staggered. It just says that it, they should be on a stagger term, but it doesn't say four have to be or three have to be, so.
This, this doesn't look great, like, because then you've got four people coming up in 2027 and two in 2029, but I understand why you arrived, like, I'm certainly not criticizing. I'm just wondering if it might be in, like, if in fact we might want to do, how many are there, one, two, three, four, five, six? If we might want to do like two for one year, two for two more years, two for, you know, three more years, like something like that? And then I think it would, organically moving forward, it would end up going the way it needs to.
We could, we could turn something like that.
How long are these terms for?
Three.
It's supposed to be three. Now, two of the members were re, they were reappointed this past June for another, two, another one-year term, but that would have been.
Do people remember when they were originally appointed? Does the Town Clerk not even have when they were originally appointed?
Is this easy enough?
That's why we went back as far as we could to see when they actually, you know, went on the committee and then tried to stagger.
When I was on the Housing Authority and they, and the, the rules changed a little bit, it was a little bit more prescriptive than this, but we still did one of these things where we just decided amongst ourselves who was going to do what. My recommendation, my only question is the 27 and the 29, that's beyond three years. That's my only reason, like, my question. So, and it's totally fine, but I guess my recommendation would be, it'd be 25, 26, 27, two, two, two. Have them decide who wants to do it, and that's it.
And then decide?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, no, like I said, I like the idea of one, two, and three, and then I like Joe's idea of having them decide, just say.
If they can't decide, then, which I find to be very unlikely, but if they can't decide, then we can just kind of decide on their behalf for the spots that they're, they need a tiebreaker, but I would just offer that. 25, 26, 27, two, two, two. Have them decide on their own. Give us recommendations, we'll appoint them then.
Would you want to start with 26, 27, 28?
Yeah, I was going to say, why, why 25?
Because 25 would, because you have to, because right now, they're all technically beyond the three-year appointments. Someone has to be here for 25. Otherwise, none of them are here for 25.
Did we?
Because I don't know when all these appointments started.
So all of these members were appointed for, oh, no, actually, no.
That's what I was just going to ask.
In 25, June 30th, 25, we had one, two, we had, I believe, four members appointed for one year, which would have brought them to the, to the 26th, and they were appointed again, that's why they're at 27. Does that make sense?
Yes, because we. Honestly, we'd just have to throw that all out because.
Yeah, we'll reach out to, we'll reach out to, to Mrs. Westfield and talk with her and see what they can come up with.
Yeah.
And then we will bring it back to the Board.
And if, I mean, like, that's our proposal, in the absence of them being able to definitively tell us when they were appointed. I mean, I would know when I was appointed to something, and I, I know all these, I actually know all of these people, and I think they would too.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
So, yeah, okay, that sounds great, so, no vote on that then. All right, and then that brings us to one-day liquor licenses. We've got 10/11/2025 Chapman Wedding, and we've got 9/20/25 Retro, nine to four Indian Head School Craft Fair.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, all right. All in favor? All right, great. Economic Development Committee update, Hanson Day is this coming Saturday from 11 to 2. Be there, be square. It is rain or shine. If it should rain, which would not be my fondest desire, then we will be at the Hanson Middle School inside. And we have done that before and we can do it again. And if it does not rain, then it will be at the Indian Head School. There will be, there will be food trucks. We will have, because this is Hanson, we have such a hodgepodge of things happening. We have got drama kids doing a performance and we have got the talented Aiden Keane doing a couple of Elvis songs. Be prepared, the kid's amazing. And we've also got the drug-sniffing dogs from Plymouth County Sheriff. So, yep, we've got over 50, you know, individual groups that are, are joining us. We'll also be joined by fire, police, and highway, who will bring all the, all the bling, all the, you know, all the vehicles. And we also have our Town Clerk, Conservation Commission, Recreation Commission, and Historical Commission all joining us as well to just kind of introduce themselves. It will be Jessica's coming, our new town clerk. She's gonna tell everybody what town clerks do and meet and greet everybody. So, so 11 to 2, it's free to attend, absolutely free to attend, and we would love to see you there. 11 to 2. And High Street Park Committee, anything going on there?
Nope.
Okay. Highway Committee, anything? Okay. Whitman, Hanson Regional School Agreement Committee. I already told you guys, we've got agreement in principle with the amendment to the regional school agreement being the next step is each respective council from the towns and from the schools are to review it just to make sure that their applicable clients are accurately portrayed and represented. And then we're going to circle back, but the plan is to have that on the May town meeting warrant. That brings us to our September 9, 20, 25 minutes.
Make a motion to approve?
Great. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. And then that brings us to, why is my, I don't, the agenda? I'm all thrown off because the agenda's not clipped to the, clipped together, so I'm kind of thrown off here, all right. That brings us to the Town Administrator Report.
Hi, Madam Chair, I'm Vice Chair and I'm the leader board. September 23rd, Special Town Meeting Warrant Posted is available online. Folks go to the main Hanson page. There is a link they can click on that will bring them right to the warrants page and they just go to the bottom. All the warrants are there in, by date, so they'll go to the bottom and that's the posted warrant. The information warrant has just been finished with review from Town Council. We are going to be waiting for the board to make their final recommendations on September 30th. Wednesday morning, it will go to the printers. So we will have the printed copies available for obviously Monday, October 6th. Each of you do have a copy of the informational warrant, the draft, in your packets to look at. Basically, it includes all the language and the biologic changes for the stormwater drainage and the MBTA information. MBTA Communities Information Forum has Select Board Chair, I'm sorry, Select Board Member Heel noticed Monday, September 29th and October 1st, 7:00 PM, at, sorry, 6:30 at Hanson Middle School. October 2nd. Oh, I'm sorry, October 2nd.
It's at 6:30?
At 6:30.
Do we have 6:30?
Did they say 6:30 or 6 o'clock?
I thought it was 6 o'clock.
Whatever's the announcements, MBTA.
Six.
Oh, okay. About six, six to 7:30. Okay, under procurement, Board of Health, the invitation for bids for refuse or waste removal services and recycling removal services is posted. The bid will be available Wednesday, September 24th. Submissions are, the deadline is October 9th and the opening will happen about an hour, one hour later for the bid opening. At that point, we will move forward with references and checks and things like that.
Who's gonna be at the bid opening?
It will be myself, the Board of Health agent will be there and we'll have a witness there, whether it be the town clerk or the administrative assistant to the Board of Health will have them there. There is a site walk for any bidders and that information is available online and on Conbuys. I'm happy to report union negotiations are complete. The town has reached agreements with all, all our unions. Special Town Meeting Warrant includes articles to fund the contracts for the first fiscal, in this fiscal year. And then our town council will be presenting some bullet points during executive session. I'm also happy to report right now, all vacancies in town hall are filled. So we don't have any vacancies in town hall right now, which is a great feeling. We are still working on, with the exception of the Highway Master Mechanic position. I'm gonna be working with the Highway Superintendent to repost that in the next few weeks with hopes of receiving applications. We'll see what happens. We are gonna put focus on benefits, things like that, maybe to attract people to come to work. Where salary didn't seem to be enticement enough, so we're gonna kind of go a different direction. But hopefully, we can get that filled. The, with the closure or nonexistence anymore of the Whitman-Hanson Express, the departments really have successfully adjusted to the new newspaper postings, which would be the Enterprise News. We did check with Town Council. They gave us information regarding a newspaper of general circulation. We did have Charlie Baker go to almost every retail establishment in town that sold newspapers to see what newspapers they carried. The majority of them had the Enterprise and the Patriot Ledger. So to go outside beyond that could be a little tricky because we could, we don't want anybody to say, hey, you posted it in a paper that's, you know, on, down the cake.
Right.
So how would I find it?
How would I possibly have known about it?
So we're safekeeping it with the Enterprise.
But can I, can we, can we just, so that's great. Thank you for doing that research and following up on Member Georgia's suggestion. I, I'm thinking this is an opportunity for us to engage our state representative in having a conversation about filing a bill. It seems insane to me that we're still posting in newspapers and that we're paying up the wazoo to post for things that nobody's even reading. Like, very few people, I will admit, I'm probably one of the few nerds that looks in the back. Okay, so we're probably not, we're not the demographic, okay? But, but very few people actually go to the back of the paper and read those types of things. So, I mean, maybe talk to our town council about the legality, but it, you know, if it's a case that it's, it's a state law, you know, and, and then that, that's why it's required, I think that there must be a way that we can have some kind of an exception for an electronic posting to substitute for that. So we need to do preliminary work before we bring it to Rup Suesi. But, you know, I think Mr. De Frey has had kind of, you know, started that conversation going and I thought it was a good one. And he said, well, you know, the land use boards, I said, why don't you let the select board pick that up and run, run with it? That's really more something that I think we should be trying to further rather than the land use boards themselves. So, so if you don't mind, and I, I'm not expecting this overnight, but if you could just sort of, you know, in your spare time, take that one.
I mean, the cost is staggering. You know, I, I've seen a couple of the invoices and they're, they're plus $300. Where, where, you know, people are used to maybe a hundred.
For no value adding, that's the thing. It's no value adding. Because, you know, when I think about it, like the abutters are going to get hard copied letters, right? So the one, people that are immediately considered abutters. Now, you know, I think the idea is it's a safety net in case those letters don't. But also maybe other people outside of abutters and a land use situation might have, you know, some kind of an interest in what's going on in their general neck of the woods or just, you know, an interest in general. I get that, but there's gotta be a better way. You know, I, I mean, I, I think this newspaper, you know, closure is so interesting in so many different ways. Like, not even just the land use boards and our required postings, but even, you know, we've struggled historically to even reach people. And although I don't really know what the number of people was that were subscribers to the paper, it was yet another avenue that we don't have anymore. So it's a struggle for communicating and, and it's a concerning one.
The L D sign was coming very soon.
Yes.
You might want to consider though, cause doing something like this is an unfunded mandate. So the idea would be that they mandate us to spend a bunch of money, but they can presumably clearly between one newspaper and another, charge a different price. When you put this together, you might want to think about the idea, it was one of the options being that the state caps how much municipality can be charged for a mandated request. So that way, the papers aren't taking huge hits because they have bills to pay, but the towns aren't also taking huge chunks out of their budget for unfunded issues.
It's worth asking. I, I don't know if that would be violating some other law or free enterprise by doing that, but it's worth asking.
Absolutely. It's definitely, definitely an eye-opening situation.
Yeah, I didn't need to be really, your, your view on that one.
Let's see, let's see. So we've got the newspapers. You know, and it's unfortunate applicants for land use boards that are required to, you know, post these things, that cost is gonna be passed on to them.
I know.
It, it hits the public out there. And so the, in the warrant, there are some articles that will cover the increased costs for now, for the advertising budgets and things like that that were required. I'm happy to report that the new supportive day program in the building is, is done. The Senior Center Director, Mary Collins, is in the process of purchasing items to go into the building, chairs, desks, things like that. She will get, be getting some technology in there. We don't have yet a date for a building dedication and grand opening, but I, I suspect that will be coming in the next few weeks.
Okay, I had heard it was roughly gonna be the first week of October, but we're not sure about that?
I have not heard yet. But as soon as I do know, we will get it out there. Pratt Place Culvert is moving closer to an approval by the Conservation Commission. Town departments that have been working on that with the engineers are working together to bring the project to the construction phase. So we are inching closer to a, an agreement with Conservation and hopefully getting approval. However, in the interim, Verdantis is going to start the procurement process because that's a lengthy process. So that's excellent move forward on that. The intersection of West Washington and County Road has a new all-way stop setup, bringing an increase to safety to that intersection. Kind of a, it's, it's a scary intersection. I travel it almost every day.
How did, how did that come about? I think it's, I think it's more scary now.
It's a state, it's a state.
We got, we got a state grant to, to take care of that and I really.
Yeah, but who made the decision?
Yeah, I gotta ask the question. I have friends that live right near that intersection. It's really not a bad intersection. There are not that many accidents there. I'm surprised that the state, the state did it.
The state makes the decision to put a traffic light there? I mean, a four-way stop?
I have to check with Highway to see how that came about.
Or was that somebody just said, hey, I think we should have a four-way stop?
No, 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 that's not the way it's done. There was a study done a while back where there were, there were statistics about accidents and what, what were the most problematic intersections. I don't know if this was the genesis of it, but I can tell you that this study was done. Not surprisingly, one of them was right in front of town hall. Then the other one was up at Dunkin' Donuts. I'd love to know who the hell even approved that fiasco that happens right there. And, and then I believe that the county road was another one of the, the issues. And so there's been a list of priorities working down the line of all of those, like, you know.
Priority of county road was a possibility priority. It was not, it wasn't based on statistics. I'm telling you.
I don't, I really don't know.
I do know that. I do know that.
Me personally, I think it was dumb. I think it was dumb making that call.
Well, it slows things down, but you know, who's gonna police the fact that people aren't gonna stop at the intersection, you know? Yeah, I'd have to check with the highway. And it's not the home street, West Washington Street, people that are the problem. It's the people on Route 14 that are flying. I mean, they've killed two of Dean's dogs, you know, he lives right there though.
You're kidding me?
Oh, yeah, people fly down that road. And, you know, well, it's, it's unfortunate. But my point is, I, I don't see the danger, the safety danger there. There are worse intersections in town.
Nevertheless, it has been done.
But they don't get handled.
It has been done. I don't know what the decision process was. I'm sure if you reach out to Mr. Jasmine, he can tell you, he can clarify, you know, how that came about being. And perhaps he could come and talk to us about how he prioritizes, what is worked on and what, what funding he receives. And it may have been a case that it was a cooperative effort where the state had identified that that's something they wanted to work on too. I don't know.
There's definitely worse intersections in town than that. King and Whitman, there's a disaster right there waiting to happen every day.
All right, well, so we'll, we'll.
We'll circle back.
TBD, yeah.
But I will also say, just to finish that off, that's, those aren't state laws. This is a state that did this. It's not state laws.
Okay.
So, well, they, they did install new guardrails in that, in that area as well. So I, I just, you know, they worked hard over, during the weekend on that project.
And I will say, despite whether people think it should or should not be there or questioning, you know, the, how it got there, I will say it was a great team effort and a prime example of everybody stepping up to help out. I think they ended up having Chris from the transfer station helped out, Charlie Baker helped out, the highway. Guys were down people and he, you know, he's been short people because he didn't fill all of the positions. So it was a all-hands-on-deck type of operation to get it done at minimal cost to the town. And so, you know, I, again, regardless of our opinion about the site itself, I do want to say, I think Mr. Jasmine did a great job of handling the personnel side of things.
Absolutely. And I also want to report that all the Chapter 90 roadway construction work and repairs and updating has been completed for the year. So kudos to them as well for completing all of that. The, and, you, at the last meeting, there was a mention, you know, of our newsletter, the newsletter. Well, looking back at the newsletter that we had, we do actually do have a template for it that can be mod, that can be altered. So we're all gonna work together over, you know, we're probably just after town meeting, but we do have licensing, so in between, to kind of resurrect the Hanson happening, we'll do the best we can. I don't know if we can do it on a monthly basis, but maybe every other month or something.
Yeah, we don't want to unduly burden you and I definitely would encourage you to reach out to the other department heads who ought to be sharing some of what they're doing as well to be in the newsletter. So I don't think that the burden should be solely ours. You know, certainly we want to reflect what the work we're doing, but, you know, but, yeah, I don't think our intention was to unduly burden you guys. I, I know it could be a heavy lift, you know?
It is, but like I said, we do have the template. They can be modified, which is great.
I'd be happy with like a quarterly, quarterly or biannual, it's fine with me. Just get people in the habit of doing it and we'll, we'll see where it takes off.
Yes.
And that actually concludes my town administrator report for tonight.
Well, that is amazing. I wasn't sure if you were gonna speak at all about the school budget, for lack of better term, situation.
I had not claimed on it.
So I would like to see if we could reach out to Superintendent Simonek in the school committee to have a conversation about what happened and the impact that that is going to have prospectively on the budget. It was quite shocking to read about it in the South Shore News, online posting on Facebook.
1.14 million?
So, yeah, I.
Know what it was?
Yeah, 1.14 million.
So they spent 1.14 million out of the $2 million in the savings account?
They, no, they only have $248,000 left.
Left, yes, that's what I'm saying. But so they had $2 million, according to the article. They had $2 million, they spent 1.2. Somebody else, yeah, spent something on something else. on something else, and now they have less than $200,000 left?
Yep.
We found out about it in a newspaper article?
Yes. Um, so, uh, clearly, we've got work to do with, uh, opening up the lines of communication. Um, I, I, it's very concerning, um, and I'm not gonna grandstand. I'm talking to myself, really, I'm trying to talk myself into not grandstanding right now. Um, so, um, so let's, let's ask the question and open up the, the line of communication, um, and try to work prospectively on this. Um, and, um, similarly, at our net, on our next meeting, um, could we try to reach out to Rep Suesi and Legal Council about that potential, um, electronic bill slash maybe capping what people can, and could we put that on the agenda for our next meeting? And I think it would be good, um, until Town Meeting, um, which is just the next two meetings, which seems shocking, um, could we just put MBTA Community Act, and really just have it as a standing agenda item, because inevitably, something's going to be coming up. Um, okay, uh, did anybody have anything else?
Do you want them to, do you want somebody from the school to be here before we have the Special Town Meeting, to talk to them?
Well.
Because that's gonna impact.
It, 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 I, I, let's see what the conversation, look, I, I don't want to, like, say that we're doing like a command performance type of thing, but I, but I, um, I was gonna reach out to Beth myself, and then I thought, well, I should really talk to the board before we take the next step here and see how we want to handle that.
For the sake of timing, because it's not on the agenda, I'll drop it, but I do want to say that this board in particular has been talking about making sure that that budget is being looked at and scrutinized, and specifically around positions, and having whether or not there were too many positions or not enough positions, and we're in this position right now because of that, and I just want to acknowledge especially the, you know, Ed and, and David in particular, that have scrutinized us from day one, and I'm, I'm not gonna let it slide. So we're, we're gonna have to get him in here sooner than later. You might not want to grandstand, but I'll certainly start grandstanding.
Oh, I, I just don't want to grandstand tonight. I'm not saying that I, no, I'm, I'm just saying, we're not posted to talk, but I didn't, I just wanted to put it as an agenda item, because we do need to talk about it.
We do need to talk about it.
Yeah, um, but it came up after this agenda was posted, so, our, our, our awareness of it came up after this agenda was posted.
I think it should be, so, what's our meeting?
Um, okay, um, all right, then with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We will be moving to executive session, and once again, I have like, here we go, no, uh, we will.
It's right there, it's right there.
Thank you. Uh, we will be moving to executive session. We will not be returning to open session. Um, we will be entering exec, executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares litigation in union negotiations, executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes, executive session minutes 819, um, not to be released, to review and approve and not release.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Yeah. Aye.
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 Did you say that?
I did.
Okay, great. Uh, we will not be returning to open session. Thank you very much.